Using this system. Actually, if we get it tweaked, I think it works pretty good.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Today is May 2nd. This is our Weekly County Commissioner Meeting. At this time, I please ask everyone to rise and say the pledge. Ed, will you lead us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Thanks Ed for leading this. Everybody get a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes, we did.
If it's okay, I entertain a motion to approve it.
Move to approve the agenda for May 2nd.
I'll second it.
Move to second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. First item up on our agenda is Commissioner Discussion. These are all action items, and we'll start with the meeting minutes, April 25th. Everybody get a chance to look at those?
Yes, sir.
Get in, I sent corrections, it looks like I got those, so.
So I entertain a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve them in a minute. What date was that? April 25th?
2nd.
Move to second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, in your packet that you got from Gabby, there should be a contract in there for a conflict public defender by the name of Hooper and Associates. And I think these guys are new. And this is kind of a standard thing, Ed, that we do. We have a couple others, DeFranco and out of Boise and Mike Pierce. Mike handles mostly misdemeanors, and DeFranco handles mostly the felonies. And DeFranco's got a federal trial this summer, he's going to be out of the loop for a while, so Hooper and Associates have applied to become our conflict public defender. And the contract is for $125 an hour, so they'll be able to back up DeFranco when he's not here. So if that's okay with you guys, I would entertain a motion to approve that contract.
The only question I had on it, the $500,000 per claim for his insurance, is that, does that meet our limits, Doug?
It does.
That they were a million? Okay, I have no problem then. I would move to...
What is the $500, $500?
It's an insurance limit, so it's basically their, you know, insurance errors and things.
Okay, and we pay for that?
They provide that.
They provide that, okay. So $500,000.
Most attorneys have that?
Yeah.
We have a minimum that we have to meet. We've gone back and forth with a couple of the others, so it looks like they meet our minimum then. I would move that we approve the conflict public defender contract with Hooper and Associates.
And I'll second it.
Move to second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move on down to our next agenda item, which is also an action item. This is to approve the letter that was written, I guess Sherri, you did this, appreciate that, to submit to the Idaho Department of Land regarding the upcoming '22 auction of endowment lands. Everybody get a chance to read those?
No, Jim, not with you quite yet, I'm sorry. Which letter? We're talking about the letter you just wrote, Sherri.
The Cougar Island.
Yeah, I haven't seen one after you, maybe took a, changed it, not sure why.
So it's in your packet? The packet that Gabby sent you?
Yeah.
If you're looking now, that should have your entire packet in there. I did remove the reference, you guys had questioned, you know, we just wanted to make a statement that we don't approve it at all, not just currently. So I took out the verbiage that would have said, you know, currently, we do not support it. I just put, we do not support auctioning the endowment lands. This has also gone through United Payette since we are in partnership with them on all of those easements.
Yeah, I guess, I gotta read it again, but we are against them auctioning just Cougar Island, but the rest, but we're not opposed to, is that correct?
Correct. The other ones were...
Just wondering if we should state that.
The other one, I think this is pretty specific to Cougar Island. There's one that is, there's two of them that are the, just the leased cottage sites. So the one's on Warren Wagon, trying to think where the other one was.
So why would we, would we be against that one?
We are not against that one. This is just regarding the Cougar Island property.
I'm just wondering if we need to stay in there that we're only opposed to the Cougar Island sale, but not the rest of it? I don't know, I'm asking, I guess.
Yeah, I think, the only thing that I thought we took issue with was the Cougar Island. I don't know how I feel about the rest of them actually, anyway, but Cougar Island was particularly one that was red flag with me.
Well, what I'm thinking in the back of my mind is if we made some kind of statement saying we support the other sales, Warren Wagon, wherever they are, that gives them a little more rope, I guess, to maybe change their mind.
Yeah.
If you're not against all of it, I think they'd just laugh at us.
Yeah.
And maybe not laugh at us, but I don't think they'd agree with this.
Yeah, I, yeah, I have, the others, I don't think, I don't believe are hot button, hot button area issues.
And I'm just wondering if we should state that in this letter, that we're not opposed to those auctions, but we are...
This is particularly sensitive to Valley County.
Is there somewhere we could add that in, Sherri?
Auction being proposed for the cottage site. I can just add that.
If you adopt that, just read that, read the changes to it, Sherri, and I think, as long as nothing else changed in the letter.
Oh, I am, I'm just putting on it, we are not opposed to the other auction being proposed for the cottage site.
Did you put that down at the bottom?
And then thank you for the continued opportunity for discussion on the IDL lands in our area. Would be the last.
Does that work with you, Ed?
Yep, I think that works fine with me.
So then, let's go ahead and make a motion to approve that new letter, and then I'm assuming you'll print it out.
I just wanted to make, I just want to make it clear that Cougar Island is what we're really concerned about, and that's, looking long term, Valley County, it's just not a good idea, it's just not a good thing to happen. Understand the state's issue with their endowment land.
You know, is there a residence or a house on Cougar Island now?
There's one.
And they're the ones...
What happened to that?
Well, that was where Sherri had made the statement, but we understand that maybe you would sell that, but I, I felt like we should just take that out altogether, because if that, for instance, goes to, say, Department of Parks and Recreation, Idaho Department of Parks, then, long term, that is, that is on a long-term lease, so at some point, in which, another thing would give, it'd be kind of a, maybe a statement to the people who now own the properties, it may not be as stable as we would like for the future.
The people that own the property is the one that's requesting it sold.
Yeah.
And so it's, and what, what will happen at that moment in time is it goes to auction and that lease goes away, they will purchase the underlying ground.
Yeah, if they had an opportunity to.
Correct.
But what I'm saying, at this point, I think it all probably, personally, should all be reconsidered.
I, I agree too.
Long term.
I'm just wondering, could Parks and Rec use that house?
Yeah.
On that facility as a rental, a weekend for some...
Or even facilitated maintenance, or whatever.
I think we're, I think we're missing it, though. Those people own that house.
Just the house?
Yes. The underlying land has to be sold at auction. We can't do anything else with that.
Well, it doesn't have to be.
It can remain in the current...
The current status of the lease.
But it's a 99-year lease.
Right. And that's fine, you know, looking at this, Cougar Island's a lot farther out than, hopefully, than 99 years, as a gem, for instance, to Pet Lake.
You're saying you would like to put in this letter that we don't want any auction of Cougar Island, and...
I'd like to see that no auction takes place on the Cougar Island stuff at this point, until, maybe, you know, as we get to SPET, what is it, Pet Land Trust, not Land Trust, but...
United Payette.
United Payette. Maybe as they go forward, they'll help come up with some long-term solutions for that as well, and that could be part of the mix.
Or the state could just continue leasing it to these people that built this land forever.
Yeah, they don't have to lease it forever.
Meaning if they're not going to auction it off and the people want it, somebody would have to buy that value.
Yeah, and so do you know that it's a long, a 100-year?
They all were 100-year lease originally, I believe, but that's what I was told upfront.
There was some talk early on when that released, and I asked one of the former directors about that, and he frankly has had some issues remembering some of that stuff, didn't seem to kind of be able to come back with all the stuff, but there was something, why it started running around in the public realm, you know, of some thought about some of that going back, reverting back to the state at some point, but I don't know if that's it, if there's any language in that agreement.
So I know when I was in banking, we looked at financing some of that, and they were, the ones that we saw were all 99-year leases.
Yeah.
So...
And I think that was typical of the light front stuff originally, yeah.
I don't think you can get a mortgage, so if anybody's...
Do you know, the house that's on there now, is it a pretty good size, is it a pretty high dollar?
It's a pretty standard-sized house.
Standard-sized.
I don't know how they're handling everything, like, obviously, there's no electricity, so they're producing their own, and septic, it's whether or not they've got a site on there that they use, I don't know, you know?
They wouldn't have gotten a building permit without a septic and oil.
Or another process for disposing.
You drill a well on a mine, then.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. See, that's the thing, it wasn't any...
Maybe they're using lake water for...
Yeah, and that's, a lot of people do use lake water, yeah.
That's true.
Yeah. So, anyway, I think we'd know more about it before.
My feeling is it should be part of the net, part of the park.
It should, that's where I think it ought to go, but, you know, they just, they actually, the park actually acquired that North Beach area too, and I don't know what the, how that happened, but who, if they had to buy it, who bought it? You know, did the...
Well, I think that would be a state park, so the state probably wrote that up.
Anyway, thanks for making those changes, I appreciate that. I just wanted to leave, I just personally wanted to leave Cougar Island out of it, with this sale, and I agree. If we can, but, you know. Up to the governor, I guess, or up to the...
Well, land board.
Land board, yeah.
What are you thinking about? I could see...
I'm trying to figure out how to verbiage this. So they actually have a process, the voluntary auction for ownership process, at the request of the homeowner. So what we're specifically asking for, and what United Payette is specifically asking for, is the four additional private residences. I, you know, I don't know. You guys, tell me what you want in here.
Well, read that paragraph that you've changed there, Sherri, and so far as I can, I remember, there wouldn't have been any other parts that I felt like I wanted to change. I think you did a great job. So, just a part that you actually changed.
Well, the only thing that we did from when I sent it was take out that we don't, we don't support auctioning it at all, not just currently, so I moved currently, and then added, we're not opposed to the other auction being proposed for the cottage site. Do you want me to put something in here that specifically states that we would like the land board to reconsider auctioning the...
Anything, anything on Cougar Island.
You could do that right towards that last, that last paragraph, but there's also a misspelling in that last sentence. You've got untied P and it should say united. Found that? You see it?
Catch, yeah.
And then add something maybe on the end of that paragraph.
Okay, so I'm going to put the cottage site, and then I'm going to put, we would We're not opposed to the auction being proposed for the cottage site. We would request a reconsideration of the auction for the existing home site until such time as a long-term solution can be found for the island as a whole.
Right, now, when you said cottage site, you mean the other cottage sites?
Cottage sites on Warren Wagon.
Have to see it. I'd put sites, I think, when you...
There's only one.
Always one.
There's one cottage site on Warren Wagon.
But there's about five or six parcels in sale and auction.
It's all on Cougar Island. There was four of those, the existing home site, and the one on Warren Wagon.
Okay, all right. Okay, that was how it come out to be so many of them. I was thinking there were some other names on those, I don't know, maybe they've just...
So who sent us that originally? I don't remember.
I'm having a hard time.
I don't know where I've been gave on this system.
All right, I remember looking at them, and I just remember a big one there. Shall we approve this, and then I'll figure out between these next meetings exactly what else is there?
That would be...
I think we can do that, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there's a real time crunch on that.
There is, it actually is, they're going on in June, so we've got to get this back.
Okay, we do need to get it back right away.
Yeah, they asked for as quickly as we could get it back, so...
I think this one will work great, I think we should go ahead and approve it.
Okay, I'll give her in the mail. I think we're good with that, as long as it's just clear that we really oppose Cougar Island, yeah, that's the thing.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve this letter?
I'll make a motion, we approve the letter to Idaho Department of Land.
I'll second.
Move to second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, and you'll print that out?
I've got letterhead, Doug, I don't have a second sheet. Is there, do you think, down in the, in the room down here, the mailroom, is there a second sheet? Do you know?
I don't believe that there is for bond paper, or...
Sign this for me, please, and then I've got to keep this together.
Can you have somebody print that then, or do you want me to?
Want to email it to me, we can make sure to get it printed.
Doug, you need to attest this. Okay, we're going to move on down to our agenda. Scott, come on up, we need to talk about approval of a payment, COMX for raised floor panels for jail pod, and we didn't get that, so I have no idea what we're, unless you sent it this morning.
You got it in your packet this morning.
I did? Let me see if I can find it.
If not, I have my file copy with me, that's all I have with me.
When did that come? Today, this morning?
No, it should have been last Wednesday or Thursday.
I've got to figure out how to get better looking at it.
I don't think I have it, Doug.
You might not, let me...
Do you have a copy there, Scott, you can bring up to us?
Yeah.
I don't think we got it in our packet, I can't find it anywhere.
105 with the floor, the computer floor tiles.
$105?
No, 105 tiles.
Oh, okay.
Two-foot by two-foot sections that come out of the raised floor in there, cheapest I've found, the next one is $9,700, what's the other? This guy has them on sale right now, he has 120. I'd like to get them locked in and get them coming so we can continue our remodeling, be ready for the furniture when it comes.
So this bill is for $8,169.23, do the floor and the jail pod.
And these are ones, Scott, where you can replace just a section of...
Yeah, mm-hmm. And I do have a few extra, we have to cut some, but I do have, you know, a couple extra in case one gets damaged or something, we can just pop it out. We have no carpeting, you know how it's partially carpeted now, this will all be the HDT or the hard vinyl covering on them.
And Doug, you're saying we take this out of pelt?
Yeah.
Okay, everybody good with that?
Yep.
So I entertain that motion?
Move to approve the payment to COMX, for the raised floor panels for the jail pod.
I'll second it.
For $8,169.23.
As amended.
Move to second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Do you need me to sign this, or bid, or...
Yeah, if you could just sign it, Mr. Chairman, and then Scott, if you can take that to Rita, she can process it and get a check cut today.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want all three of us to sign this, or just me?
If you wouldn't mind all three, because it's coming out of the front.
I think Scott signs this, does who do I sign this part? Well, I don't know. Valley County... Thanks, Scott. Hey, we're going to move on down, our next item is the next item, these are tax cancellation requests, Jana, come on up, and then we've also got a joint quarterly.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have three additional tax cancellation requests. The three are all the same issue, so I'll just explain them kind of in a general overview. We have a few common area parcels within subdivisions that have recently been assessed Forest Practices Act and Forest Charge Special Assessment Taxes. These subdivisions don't have HOAs, and they don't have someone to manage any costs associated with the common areas. We discussed this about a parcel that Mr. Gary Swain owned a couple months ago. He came in and spoke with you about the frustrations and the complications with assigning tax to these parcels. At the time, I talked with IDL and SITPA about how we can mitigate this problem, but we weren't able to come to a solution then. Now we have two parcels who are up for tax deed, these are very large acre common area parcels in the middle of a subdivision, and it would create quite a bit of complication if those were to be sold via tax deed in the middle of a subdivision, they're platted as common area, it could, you know, create some frustrations with current homeowners and future, the potential buyer of that parcel. So, tried again with IDL and SITPA, I sat down in a Zoom call with the director from IDL and the local guys, and they agreed to do a cancellation of those taxes in all three of the parcels at hand. We did a brief search to see if we could find any other parcels like this that were creating problems in Valley County, and I did not find any. So I think that taking care of these three will address the current problem. What's happening here is, every few years, the forest, or the state goes in and does a survey of the land, and if they see trees on the land, they assess a Forest Practices Act and a Forest Charge Tax. Because of the amount of trees on these three parcels, they're only charged the minimum amount of tax, and in the discussions that we had over the phone, they agreed that the minimum charge was adequately being dispersed amongst the other owners of land in the subdivision, that these taxes could be canceled and it wouldn't cause an impact to the funding. So if you look at the two that are going up for tax deed, this past year, the amount of tax that they were assessed was $2.42 and $9.82, so we're talking a very small amount of taxes. So, the tax cancellation requests are number 15 through 17. Tax cancellation, the 15 is a total of $40.20, this includes principal, or penalties and interest. Cancellation request 16 is $185.87, and number 17 is $120.64.
Do you need these separately, or can we do it all as one?
You can do it all once, and this is something that kind of comes around every time they reassess timber ground up here, and so you might have a lot that was assessed in the past, it's gone in and cleared the lot, so that comes off, and sometimes they miss some. So this is kind of something that happens every few years with the Forest Practices Act, and this is how we fix it. I got a total of 346.71, is that what you got?
You know, I did not add all three of them together.
So, one question to you, Jana, on these small amounts like this, where apparently it just comes about because there's really no value to speak of, is there?
Right, well, the value of the lots is distributed amongst the other...
Right.
Lots in the subdivision, and because this is a special assessment tax, Valley County doesn't receive any tax from these charges, they're distributed directly to the agency which is charging the special assessment.
Right, okay. Well, it almost seems like it'd be an issue where, I mean, we'd have some sort of policy in place where we just kind of, you know, the go-no-go, as opposed to, you know, just being nickel and dime together throughout the year on it.
As in, you're thinking we would not assess the tax in the first place?
Well, it seemed like, it seemed like to me, if you look at it and it goes, okay, it's only $10 up to 50, say, or whatever, you know, so, well, that's a wash, we just can't afford to, we just can't afford to do that, but I don't, maybe I'm thinking wrong on that, I don't know.
The state statute states that we have to waive all taxes, and we have to...
Treasure can't do that.
Treasure can't do that. Commissioners have to actually...
We have to actually do that, basically, and so, I mean, you see stuff coming in for nickel and dime, you know?
Right. I want to make sure that my office is being transparent, and I'm not canceling taxes as a favor to anybody, so...
Yeah, right.
That's why they have it come forward to the Commissioners, so you can see every tax cancellation that happens.
Well, we cancel taxes, and we cancel value as well.
Yes.
Two separate things.
Yep, you'll have one of those.
Sherri's absolutely right, state code mandates, so we're the only ones that can do that.
Do it, yeah, all right.
The checks and balances type of thing.
Right. I would entertain a motion to approve these tax cancellations, 15 through 17.
I'll make a motion that we approve these tax cancellation requests, you need the numbers, or the three?
It's 15, 16, and 17.
15, 16, and 17.
I will second with the amendment of it's $346.71 total cancellation.
Okay, move to second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, come on up.
Got left too soon.
I'll also give you the update with the four cancellations last week, these two, only two of these were in tax deed, and then we had one payoff, we are dealing with 30 different parcels that are in the process of tax deed.
They're slowly going away.
Slowly going away, we sent out all the certified letters on Friday of this week, so hopefully we'll see some more of those payoff in the next few weeks.
Slowly going away, we sent out all the certified letters on Friday of this week, so hopefully we'll see some more of those pay off in the next few weeks.
Scott.
Okay, and then we need, next agenda item is an action item, this is approve the jointly, joint quarterly statement of treasurer's cash, say that five times in a row.
Yep, so this is, I was reading statute, and it looks like this is a report that needs to be presented before the commissioners once a quarter. Doug's clerk's office and the treasurer's office funds agree, so we both agree that we have the same amount of money, everything's reconciled.
Everybody get a chance to look at that, it's a lot of numbers, and this is another checks and balance deal, that's kind of important.
Yes.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the joint quarterly report, and this is for what, third quarter?
This is the first quarter of, well, I guess fiscal year, it's the second quarter.
Second quarter? Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, you're right. February, March, okay.
And it looks like only Doug and I signed this report, there's no lines on here for commissioners, but in an effort to be transparent, we are presenting it.
Do you understand this, Ed?
Yeah, I sort of, I looked through some.
We do this every quarter, that may.
Every quarter to get a
Yep.
balance sheet, you know.
And their numbers have to jive with the treasurer's, and everybody's happy, if it doesn't, then, when we have some serious work to do, but it's always jived right on, so. I would entertain a motion to approve then the joint quarterly report for the second quarter of twenty-two. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved in second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And anything else?
That's it, thanks Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Did you get hold of Scott?
I just sent him a text.
He must have forgot. While he's coming, our next agenda item is an action item, this is the woody debris summer dumping schedule, and we're waiting for our facilities director to come in, but in the meantime, Doug, remind me what we're doing now, we're doing all summer long from, what is it, five, five-ten to ten-twenty? May to October?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, related to woody debris.
Woody debris summer dumping schedule.
Currently, we are not charging all summer long for them to dump woody debris. And because of the amount of it, Scott's recommending that we do a month, the month of May, and the month, I think of October, it's either September or October, he's recommending, maybe September. And then charge the rest of the summer to help pay for the cost to actually get rid of the pile at the end of the year, because it's such a huge pile now.
And then he was talking, if I remember correctly, last week about a commercial fee for the commercial guys. So we'll wait for him to come in and see where we go.
We, it sounds like we charge commercial, but we're charging them in recent times reduced amount. And, um, so it sounded like, what I understood is he probably thinks, well, we maybe should stop, and I agree with that a hundred percent, we shouldn't really, commercial guys are bidding their jobs. They need to be paid by the cost, you know, and I really think that, and now, it sounds like we're not grinding, you know, the lumber.
Scott, it's Sherry, were you gonna do the woody debris dumping schedule?
Well, there's a difference here, there's woody debris, which is the land. And then there's the construction. All we're talking about is the woody debris site, which we normally burn every year, so there really isn't a lot of cost to it.
Right.
There isn't. I'm just wondering if we should get stuff on the phone, because.
Okay, so, um, okay, so, do you want to, because this is an action item, and it says summer dumping schedule, so on the eighteenth, I think, is the work session with everybody. We've got ten minutes, if you want to come talk about this now.
I, I've thought about that too, we got, oh, you talking, Scott, I'm sorry. We got this work session coming up on the eighteenth to deal with this, and I'd kind of like to not make any changes until we have an opportunity to
Actually talk.
Talk about with a larger, you know, group. And it seems like it's, and I don't want to discourage people from bringing their debris, because I think original intent, that's a good idea, that's what we've got now, is how do we get.
Stephanie, this is Commissioner Hasbrook, we're in Commissioner's session right now, so this conversation is live, but we are talking about changing the woody debris dumping schedule, and I would really like to know your thoughts.
Oh, what, I guess I would like to know what you're proposing, I know we have a meeting on the eighteenth to discuss it with all of the stakeholders.
And I'm just wondering if maybe we should postpone this decision until that meeting.
Well, certainly, I think it would give you an opportunity to have everyone at the table, both from, well, several different perspectives, but also maybe would know more about the origin of the program and how it has subsisted all over time.
And I think that's important, I know we have some kind of a deal with Meckel and hauling some of the stuff from the fire stations, and so my feeling right now is to postpone this decision for a little bit until we get the full story. But you're gonna be there for that meeting on the eighteenth?
Absolutely.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to clue us in on, or?
He's walking in the door right now.
Scott's coming in now, we're waiting for him to come in, he's the one that's asked for this.
Okay, uh, Scott, who?
Clingham, Clingham, Billings of Grounds.
Okay, okay, um, well, I can say that I think it's really important that this is a very highly invested program from all stakeholders, and so I think it would be essential for everyone to have an opportunity to speak about it and to make sure that all of the information is on the table as thoughts and decisions are being developed.
So you didn't put this on the agenda for today, Scott?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, I think maybe it was a miscommunication then. We just have an action item for the woody debris summer dumping schedule, and you and I had talked about maybe, you know, giving free months.
Yeah, we're looking at, doing like, if we can get it in here, get it through like, uh, May fifteenth to June fifteenth, and then till like September fifteenth, October fifteenth, but the rest of the year, you know, be charged for the woody debris and no discounts at all, at any time for the commercial contractors.
So you're talking about at the site, though, and Stephanie would be working with the dump stations throughout the communities, correct? So that, how would we deal with the ones that are like by the fire departments and that kind of thing, where people could just bring it all year long? You want to discuss that on the eighteenth?
Yeah, because I, you know, we, we're gonna have to, you know, we're looking, we're gonna have to do something different with our woody debris and how we handle it, and it's gonna cost us more to do it. So we, the program, the way I look at it, needs to help pay for itself, whatever we do going forward, and, uh, so, um, that's why we proposed, going back how it used to be, I'm understanding, uh, we started the free two years ago, or something, uh, prior, or the first year I got here, or prior to that, but that was, used to be the procedure that we'd, you know, we gave a free month on the spring and fall, and then the rest of the year, you know, it was paid for. And so. Okay, well, I, I think we've got too many other things that we need to talk about, committee folks to bring to the table to make a decision today, so my feeling is that we postpone this agenda until the eighteenth after that discussion. Um, all I can say is there's been a lot of work that's gone into the woody debris program in my ten years here, and, and, uh, you know, it's been very successful, but, um, I don't know all the costs involved in it, so we need to get some of that together too, and see where we are on it. Yeah, because, I mean, the woody debris pile is just, you know, it's growing almost beyond our capability to handle it. Right. And so if we're gonna, we're gonna have to find a solution for it, and as you know, any solution we find is gonna cost us money, you know, so it, it needs to kind of, my way, it needs to pay its way, you know, is how I'm looking at it. And, uh, because we're, you know, if we're gonna look at partially chipping some of it and then burning the rest, you know, if we can chip some of it, so we don't quite have as large a a burn pile, um, and do that kind of in conjunction with the construction woody debris, you know. But you know, the issue with chipping woody debris is it's mostly bark and pine needles, and mills don't like that kind of stuff, they want the pure wood chips, and so that was the rub that we kind of ran into years back. Okay. They didn't like it, too much dirt, that kind of stuff. Yeah, but, you know, we're getting, you know, like this, we look at the piles last couple of years, and especially with the commercial lock clearing, we have a lot of large branches and, and large wood items, you know, it's and I think a majority of the large volume we're getting has been the lock clearing, not so much individuals cleaning, you know, there, there are lots of, say, burning it's, you know, becoming an issue. Yep. So, like I say, we're gonna have to do something, and it's gonna have to, you know, kind of help pay its way.
Scott, has the Forest Service been invited to that meeting on the eighteenth, do you know?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Is that something we should do?
We mentioned that to the Forest Service last week, didn't we?
What was their response to that today? Want to be involved in it?
I think they would, yeah.
Okay.
I, I can send out an invite.
Mm-hmm, yep. And we need to, I don't know if we can talk with Dave, you know, what, what Tamarack, or, um, Tamarack mill? You know, just what they will and won't take, you know, or what they want to see there. If they're gonna take the debris, the debris from construction trash, I think they would, you know, you know, as long as we've got a lot of limbs, not sending them a lot of dirt and stuff.
Scott, are you, do you have, um, do you have any data on this, I mean, in other words, all the stuff comes across your scales? You know, do you, do you keep a, do you have something that we can actually look at on the eighteenth, as far as volume and weights? And also, do we take debris that, from these lock clearings that are possibly commercial, free, and that's the thing, you know, if, is there some way to take a look at that, because in my opinion, if somebody's being paid to do a project, that's commercial.
Well, commercial gets charged.
And they get charged.
But they get a discount for it, during, during the free, when everyone else gets it free.
Yeah.
They get a discount.
Well, I, it's, you know, maybe that's something to look pretty closely at, because if they're, if those guys are getting paid to do this, that should be part of their bids for this project, in other words, we shouldn't subsidize that part of it.
I don't think there should be a discount for commercial or anything.
I don't think, you know, but maybe that's something you could look pretty much immediately at, but this other thing about getting rid of the debris, I personally like to have a fairly extensive discussion on that on the eighteenth and look for maybe come up with a prog, program to look forward. I mean, this year, we need, may need to burn, so maybe we need to look at burning it right.
Yeah.
You know, instead of, yeah, what we've been doing.
Well, and then I think, you know, Steph on the phone, we're kind of running out of time, but there's some other funding that we use to pay some of those costs that doesn't come from the county, so, um, um, my feeling, like I say, is let's postpone this so we can all get around the table on the eighteenth and have a rediscussion, does that work? Does that work for you, Steph?
I think it's important, because I think that there can be solutions that won't be terribly painful, just a reset, and look at, at where we're headed in the future.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
All right, thanks for your call, or thanks for tuning in.
All right, thank you.
See you.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, we're gonna move on then. Next agenda item is an action item, this is a local agreement for Eastside Drive, Jeff, come on up. And kind of explain to me some of this stuff, this is like, they're gonna pay for the whole thing?
So with the infrastructure money that came through, this will be, and it says it in here, zero dollar match for the construction of Eastside Drive Bridge, it was gonna be about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars match, we won't have to pay none of that, and it says it in here, zero dollars.
Jeff, with Eastside Drive, what?
North end of Payette Lake, the low narrow concrete bridge.
All right.
Yep, we've already gone through the design and everything, and our engineering firm is really just did an awesome job getting the environmental out of the way, the hydraulics, so they're ahead of schedule, and they're ahead of some other bridges that we're gonna get done this year, so this, it's not guaranteed yet, but there's a possibility it's gonna get done this fall, two years earlier than what it's supposed to be done.
Great. Was that bridge gonna be designed so that we can accommodate maybe a bike route or stuff like that in the future?
Just like the bridge by our shop in Lake Fork.
Oh, good.
It'll be thirty-six or thirty-eight feet wide.
Yeah.
Pondrosa Park's actually paying for some of the fancy concrete stamping and make it look a little.
That falls into their, um, the park there that.
It's in the park, yes.
Yeah, it does fall, yeah.
Yep.
So Jeff, my question is, I think this is awesome, I'm glad you, I hope we get it. What are we gonna do from the road there south to the pavement, what's the plan for the rest of the?
South?
You know, where you come on down and it's.
There's about a half a mile through there that we do not own right of way on.
And that's state land there?
The state.
Can we, can we negotiate right of way through there now?
It was, Jerry was working on it, Robinson, and then Curtis came in and it kind of got, I'm not quite sure what exactly happened, but it kind of got put aside, the guy that was working on it for the state, Chris Clark, he moved on, I think he's working for the Forest Service now, so we probably have to start all over.
Have to start, and what is that, a seventy-foot?
I think it was gonna be a seventy-foot right of way.
If I remember right, there's a lot of hard rock.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a very expensive
Yeah.
road to build.
We do need that right of way, I think, pretty much.
Yeah.
We, we really ought to get back on that one.
But at least we'll have the bridge done.
Yep.
Okay, everybody good with this, so I need it?
That needs to be on the long-term transportation plan, probably.
Yeah.
So I'd entertain a motion then to approve this local agreement.
I would move to approve this state local agreement for the Eastside Drive Bridge.
I'll, I'll second it.
Moved in second, any more discussion? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Somebody need to sign?
Oh, I thought you were signing, I was just getting ready to ask.
No, 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 I'm trying to keep notes here.
I can get it marked, I'm more designed.
It's all right. You can do it slow if you want.
That's actually all three of you?
Yep.
Jeff, with the boring cost, did you send us that? I don't remember seeing that, was that like a week ago you sent it, or separate from our pack, right?
It wasn't an actual quote, it was the
Estimate.
It was an estimate of sixty thousand.
Okay.
And I've already talked to them, they said.
It'll stay under the fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can get in front of the microphone and pitch?
Yeah, this, this, uh.
Talk about that one.
I was looking for a document.
So it calls for, uh, the SPWC, ISPWC, Idaho State. Please, can't remember what the acronym stands for, but anyways, there's a standard for boring seven hundred and fifty feet or every thousand feet, they do a five-foot bore in the road, they take a four-inch sample out, and they take that back to the lab, test it, make sure it meets compaction tests, all this other stuff, and that'll tell us if, if it's good to put new pavement over. If not, we will probably do overlays on most of those roads.
What do you, when you talk about doing overlays, you just mean just lay another little concrete layer on top of asphalt?
We'll patch it up as smooth as possible, like we did on East Lake Fork, and then, then we'll probably have valley paving, just put an inch and a half overlay over it, that'll hold it together for, till we, till the right of way costs go down to where we can actually go in, and but they're talking with parametrics and a couple other people, they, they think by, by grinding up the asphalt that's already there and adding that to the road, it'd be kind of like the highways doing. Some places it works, some places it doesn't, you're, instead of three inches of asphalt, you're gonna have six. Because we're just gonna mill and then re-put that stuff down in place, that's your first layer of asphalt, and then the other three inches over the top of that.
How do you feel about that, Jeff, it didn't seem to me like, it's just kind of like Band-Aid.
Well, that's, that's why we're gonna hire this boring company with your guys' blessing to tell us if it's gonna be a ten-year Band-Aid, or if we get twenty years out of the asphalt.
Yeah, because it makes, seems like it doesn't really make sense to do Band-Aids on most of our stuff, and.
Right. A lot of it's money.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, to do an inch and a half overlay on what's already there, probably gonna knock that one point eight million dollar bid down to, it'll be five hundred thousand probably, maybe four hundred.
So, I'm, I'm a little confused by all the conversation actually.
Oh, sorry.
So the boring is going to tell us, engineering-wise, what is the best course of action on each one of these roads?
Yes.
So I agree with Ed, we don't want to continue to patch bad roads. We have to figure out what a long-term solution is for these roads, so that we're not going back to them all the time.
So an overlay will probably give us ten years.
An inch and a half overlay? So what did we just do in RFP for?
Three inches.
So.
A brand-new asphalt, and that also included pulverizing the existing asphalt.
Okay, so why would we go to an inch and a half if we already have a bid and approved a three-inch?
Cause an inch and a half is just like on the East Lake Fork Road. That is a Band-Aid.
It is a Band-Aid, right?
Yep, yep, cause when that road gets rebuilt, there's no way that road was gonna make it four more years until the grant kicked in to rebuild that road.
Right.
You gotta keep the water out of it.
So what you're telling me right now is, is that you would want to spend money on an inch and a half Band-Aid in order to have a long-term plan to rebuild the road?
If that's what it comes down to.
I think we need to have that conversation.
You need to explain to everybody if, okay, to rebuild that road, what that entails, like we did on Eric.
But sort of, so we just got a deal from the two thousand and seven CIP from Parametrics, and to do a total, this is a full, full-blown total rebuild, eighteen inches of base, the crush, three inches of asphalt, mile of road is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And how long would that last?
And that's, well, just, that's without the asphalt.
Yeah, that'll.
That'll last forever, just like Eric.
Yeah.
But to do that, we gotta widen it out to standards, and the only way to do it is to buy a lot of right-of-way.
Yeah.
Why do you have to widen it out to standards?
Our standards for a major collector are, uh, I think thirty, thirty-two foot road top. So whether it's paved or gravel, it's thirty-two feet wide. And by the time you, by the time you build a road eighteen inches high, or it's gonna be about twenty-four inches high, you do a four-to-one slope off of that, you're gonna add six foot onto the width of your road right there. And our fifty-foot right-of-ways won't take that and still allow room for utilities.
Jeff, is there an exception, like on each fork where it's all wetlands and ponds and water to get out of that standard?
Nope.
Just to make it a narrower road?
Nope.
No?
Not on that one. We're gonna make it match the rest of the road.
And that's all gonna be ferreted out in the upcoming master plan.
East Lake Fork's already in design right now.
But I mean, as far as which roads we need to gain right-of-way on, which roads are gonna become the major collectors, the minor collectors? That's all going to be discussed in the upcoming plan.
In my mind, a lot of these minor collectors, we have, it's a lot easier to get a grant on a major collector, like East Lake Fork. Pearson would be considered a minor collector.
Have you seen Pearson and Sampson Trail right now?
Huh?
Have you seen Pearson and Sampson Trail right now? You have a plan for those, like ASAP?
Patch. Well, Pearson's gonna get redone this year, that's on that.
Yeah, it's gonna get re, yeah.
But man, I was on them this weekend and they're a nightmare.
Yep.
Yeah. Jeff, on, on that one, Pearson, are you, we look, gonna be doing something to that bridge over the canal?
That's, we were gonna bypass that somehow, and I can't remember how it was gonna happen years and years ago. We were gonna cut that ninety out.
Probably along that irrigation canal?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, but then that subdivision went in right there and.
Here's some corners.
Here's some corners, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Cause that is a bad curve. I actually had a pretty good wreck on it one time, on my bus, on my bicycle.
On your bicycle, huh?
Yeah, man.
All this stuff's gonna get re-looked at at this transportation plan.
Yeah, so let's get back to the day's agenda on this. We're gonna limit it to fifty thousand, is that what we're gonna do?
We can keep it under fifty.
Okay, I think that's.
Cause I talked to two other companies and they're booked for the summer.
So you need a motion for us stating that to keep it under fifty thousand, or are you just good with it?
It was just a discussion, you guys wanted to talk about it. Um, if it's under fifty, I really don't need a motion or anything, I've got it in my budget.
Yep. I'm good with that.
I definitely think that we need to bore the roads and, and get a long-term plan and solution for these roads. We're not patching all the time.
I mean, if they come in and say, oh, Johnson's got a good base under it, Pearson's got a good base under it, mill it and pave it.
It'd go, yeah.
And that way, we have backup to whoever going, well, you just put a, you just put a five-year Band-Aid on it, I can throw the engineering fines at them and go, hey, this is going off of what an engineer says.
Absolutely.
Okay, everybody good?
I'm good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Hey, we're gonna go on down to our agenda. Sorry, ladies, we're running a little late.
I need to get the signed, oh, Doug's got it.
Um, our next item is an action item. This is a value cancellation from Board of Tax Appeals.
Yes.
Sue, go ahead.
Uh, so we received the Board of Tax Appeals decision, uh, for the Jakias', and they lowered the land value by one hundred thousand, um, and they went back to the original improvement value that was the certified value for two thousand and twenty-one of six thirty-two, one forty-four. So we're actually canceling overall eighty-five thousand, thirty-four dollars. Cause it was ordered, uh, for the grand total to be eight sixty, five fifty-two.
So are we canceling taxes also or just the valuation?
Well, when we cancel the value, it'll in turn go to Johanna and she will cancel the taxes on the eighty-five thousand.
And so once you guys looked at this, do you agree with the assessment? I mean, I guess we really can't disagree, but.
Where does these, where's these follow-up assessments come from?
From the Idaho Board of Tax Appeals. So, uh, Mr. Jakias filed a BOE, and it came before you guys last June.
A board of equalization.
And then he wasn't happy with that decision, so that gives him the right to go on to the Idaho Board of Tax Appeals. And so he did so, and they lowered it, the land value.
But they did raise the thirty-seven inch a little bit too.
They went back to the original home value. Um, so why they did that, I don't know, but they did, so.
Do we ever challenge those, um, assessments? Cause we got, you got all, everybody else in the same boat, right? I mean, essentially.
So if, if we were to challenge this, uh, decision by the Idaho Board of Tax Appeals, we'd have to go to district court.
That's not worth the cost to do that.
Not really, no.
It's really not too bad. We only lost eighty-five thousand. I don't think that it's a serious hit.
Right.
What did they end up deciding on the homeowner's exemption for this parcel? Cause that was part of the argument. Is that the different guy? Oh, okay. I'm, I'm thinking of this guy that his wife lived here and he lived down the road. Different guy, okay. Never mind, no question. Everybody good with this?
Unfortunately.
Yes.
We don't really have a choice.
Yeah, you don't, you don't have a choice.
I guess the message here is if you don't like it, come and appeal and.
Yep.
Yep.
You know, and that, that kinda.
I move that we approve the cancellation ten, the value cancellation from the Idaho Board of Tax Appeals on Jakias.
I'll second it. Who didn't second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Doug, are we doing a, me, a Zoom invite for Mackenzie? All right, it just hit me, I didn't know if I was supposed to set that up or not, so.
Well, we got you here. How many for BOE yet, do you know? Oops, sorry, whoop. Nothing yet?
Hopefully it's too early for that.
It's too early for that.
I guess assessments won't come out on June, do they?
Well, beginning of, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right, thank you, have a great day.
Hey, you too, thanks so much.
Susan training, Susan's making her do all this.
Yep.
So Mackenzie's calling in, is that what you said?
She's on right now, Mr. Chairman, just give me one moment.
All right, we do this for.
You can bring it, you can bring it back to me.
Yeah.
Our decision was affirmed.
Affirmed, yep.
Good news?
Yeah, it is.
They held up, they held, upheld their evaluation.
Yeah, good, good. Hey, Mackenzie, can you hear us?
I can, yes.
Good morning. Yep. So at this time, we have a next agenda item is the presentation of results from the ARPA survey. Mackenzie, you're up.
Yes, I, um, if it's works for you guys, I thought I would share my screen. Um, I just have a little PowerPoint. I think I sent you guys the, um, the overview PowerPoint or PDF, um, but I thought it might be better to, um, to just go over this and look at it in bigger terms. Might be just easier. So, let's see if this can pop up here. There it is. Okay, can you guys see this PowerPoint? Okay.
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
Cool. Um, so we've had this survey going, uh, we, we launched it about March twenty-ninth, so it's been going for about a month. Um, and we're planning to keep this going until at least June first, I think was the original, the original idea. Um, so I just wanted to give kind of a midway point update on where we're at. Um, and so I thought I'd just bounce through some of these questions, but I also wanted to make sure you guys knew, uh, what, how the data's being populated and what it looks like here. So, let me see if I can go to the next slide. So we started with, let's see, there's seven questions that are examples of projects that we put out for people. So that's what these first ones are. And the way that it's set up is that it's a slider, so someone can pick from zero to one hundred um, on how much they like that particular project. So the number that you're seeing, like the forty-nine, is the average of what people have selected. So some people might have selected ten or zero, and some might have selected a hundred, and so this is just the aggregate. And then the total number there is just the total, like the actual total number, so, uh, based on what everybody has selected. And that's helping us just get kind of a benchmark of, of what people are interested in. So does that part make sense? I want to make sure that that, at least that, how we're getting the numbers makes sense to everybody. Okay, cool. So, um, these you can see, um, a lot of these are, are fairly, um, average. So housing is, um, our average number here is forty-nine. Um, I'm going to, I, I put all these into a slide for individual, but I think maybe the most significant one is the summary, which might be a lot easier to look at here. So as the summary comes up, I am, um, I just put all of those numbers in order of what, you know, what people, um, selected, so that we could see. And broadband and road, um, kind of topped that list, followed closely by housing. And then beyond that, there is quite a bit of dislike, despair, of difference in what people, what people are wanting to see. So this is just the basic numbers on the projects that we put forward to people. Now, the big, the big open-ended question, what other projects, um, also gives us a lot of insight. So, um, you know, this is the, this is the overview of what we had suggested, just to get people started. Um, I'm gonna switch to another one, which is a word cloud. Word clouds are great and also terrible, because it's really hard to figure out what exactly people are wanting here. So I tried to go through, we had, um, a hundred and forty-six people offer additional ideas or additional thoughts on what they wanted. Um, the word cloud to the right is populated by the survey, um, and you can see housing, roads, facilities, um, you know, those words tend to pop out a lot. When I looked down through, I just did kind of a quick tally, and there were really like four additional areas that, that popped. Roads by far was the most suggested use for those funds, and not even just like facility infrastructure, repaving, like repaving roads. Um, so that's some, some good data for us. Um, housing was also a really hot topic, um, affordable housing, um, you know, whatever we could offer, um, to help families, um, get housing was mentioned often. Um, a couple of ones that I was surprised by, and also it might be a good opportunity for us to do some education as to like what the, what the county can actually fund or not fund. But the teen and family resources, the indoor athletic facility, bowling alley, rec center, um, really that indoor recreation was mentioned many, many times. Um, as well as the fairground upgrade, um, the fairground itself. And then I listed some additional ones. These were mentioned a little less often, but had, you know, repetitive themes in there with upgrading of sewer facilities, working with, um, you know, the municipalities to do that, offering childcare or, or childcare support, um, a lot for sidewalks or pathways. Um, there were some interesting ones about consolidating fire districts or aiding emergency services, uh, preserving land in open space, adding additional, um, recycling centers, and then putting some funds toward wildlife mitigation. So thus far, that is where we're at. We're about halfway through. Um, but I just wanted to give you guys kind of a, a benchmark here of, of what we're, what we're seeing, and then see if you guys had any questions, um, or if we want to address any of this now, rather than wait until the survey closes.
Mackenzie, this is all, just a quick question on the rec center indoor. I'm assuming most of those comments come from the north of the county?
I'm gonna guess so, um, and I will, let me switch over to this, just so you guys can see the breakdown of who has taken the survey thus far, cause I think that, that does weigh into it. Um, a lot of the indoor recreation, um, comments centered less around like a pool and fitness facility and more about, um, an athletic facility where like high school students or sports teams could practice in inclement weather, because a lot of our sports teams struggle with finding gym space and things like that. So, uh, the, I mean, the, the rec center, I think, um, that might be the idea, but I, the, the impression I got from a lot of these comments was that it was more of like a, you know, a larger just indoor sports facility. Um, so, I don't know if that helps, but.
Well, I, I, I think that's important, because you know, like if we're gonna redo fairgrounds, maybe that's something that we need to think about, even though it doesn't make sense when we've got a pool and a rec center kind of across the tracks, but it's a really a different kind of facility.
Yeah, I think, and that's the impression I got, is that, um, it was more for sports teams' practice facility that would, that would help with our weather.
So, hey, uh, just one point on that. You know, you showed Donally Lake Fork and McCall Cascade, and the numbers obviously are different. Now, that kind of, does that seem to follow along with the, those populations? I mean, it seems like percentage-wise on the responses?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think representative of the, of the amount of people that live in those areas in our county, um, you know, that's, I, to me, that's, I'm not shocked by, by the response rates there.
I wish we could get these many people out to vote.
Yeah. Yeah.
Depending on what we do, we might.
Yeah, yeah.
Mackenzie, will you go back to the slide nine? You had lumped together, um, the county campus improvements. Does that include the fairgrounds, or is the fairgrounds under the road?
Yeah, so the way we had worded the question on that in particular was not road projects, like not paving projects, it was road infrastructure and facilities. So the, the way that that question was worded is that it also would address the facility near the fairgrounds. Um, and so that word was put in there. So I think that, that that's a good, that's a good point, a good difference.
Road facilities then includes the fairgrounds?
Yes.
Okay.
One, one other quick question, Melissa, so that the people can, that are listening to this, can you explain the kind of intent of this money real quickly? I mean, so to go back, when, we can follow back and see how, how these things fit into that intent for that grant?
Yeah, well, I might actually defer to Sherry, because the, the intent of this funding has, has morphed a bit. I mean, it was, there was an original intent, and now the scope has been broadened a bit, but we are still limited in what we can actually spend funds on.
We're not limited any longer. So the original ARPA funds were for broadband sewer and water only. You had to, and it had to show how this impacted, uh, COVID and coming out of COVID. But now, any community. But now, any community that has a map or a, an amount coming under 10 million, you can use it for anything. They took all the parameters off of it.
All right.
We have 2.2 million.
Yeah, so that's why I thought that was kind of important, that these things fit into the intent of the grant. And I'm just, I do.
Well, I think what it does for me is it tells me where we need to concentrate those funds. And I don't really see that we're gonna spend 2.2 million dollars moving the road department and fixing the fairgrounds. I'm hoping maybe it'll be half that. And so, we're gonna be able to spread this money out over two or three of the top of these three. You understand what I'm saying? It's not all gonna go to one spot, certainly.
Well, and it'd be great, because these are one-time investments, if they could be grant match. And we could actually broaden and expand what this money is. If we could turn 2 million into 10 million, what a wonderful thing that would be.
Well, it might not be 2 million, but it might be a million, a million and a half, depending what's left over from the road move and the 4H and all that stuff. But what I'm saying is, we don't need to blow it all in one spot. We can figure out what that match you're gonna need for broadband, how much we're gonna need there, then we'll use what's left, I'm assuming, to work on the road department and the fairgrounds. Well, that's, looks like our two top priorities.
Yeah, one of the thoughts that I had is if you take that money and just, we've obviously got lots of places to put it.
Oh, yeah.
And then you go back to where Jeff was just talking about, well, the road broadband, the need for, for instance, right-of-way need is a big issue. If you look at using funds like this for long-term, getting the most bang for your buck out of things is what. I mean, you hate to see them go, well, it'd be great to have any of those things, but. You know, in other words, we don't just necessarily just jump in and fix the roads out of it, but you can't. It's not enough.
Not enough, not nearly enough.
You know, so.
No, the, the right-of-way costs are always, almost twice as much as actually fixing the road.
Right. But again, in long-term, we gotta have them, or we can't ever have a good, you know.
And I, I think, hopefully, the newspaper will do a little bit of an update. And if people have really strong opinions, they will hop in, take this survey before June 1st. And then I do think, you know, we need to have some open meetings with people coming in and talk about. So, my biggest concern is that we don't spend this pot of funds in one section of the valley. It needs to impact the valley as a whole.
It needs to have a positive effect for the county.
And we, and, and kind of not counter that, but to throw the other side of it, we spent a lot of money on roads, but that end of the valley, the last few years, Warren Wagon was a lot of money.
Right.
And now we're gonna replace the bridge. So you kind of gotta balance that out, and everybody kind of get treated.
And they think we're gonna do this out here, though, right in front of the golf course, all the way down, is that road.
I hope so, that's supposed to be on the agenda for this year.
Well, and that's, that we received the grant on that, so, yeah.
But when you talk, talk about roads, it's always political, because everybody wants their road by first.
And, and that road thing, it goes back to this road committee we got, all this stuff. It's a long-term thing, and it is, we are looking for solution. And I, you know, I mean, just, okay, we got a couple of dollars, just throw it into this road, because it's got potholes. It's a short-term fix for some of the stuff. And this money, in my opinion, should be used for, just look at that. I like the idea, for instance, of doing a good fairground, so you have a centerpiece in Valley County. In other words, that stays there at last.
And that helps all of Valley County, because they don't even bring in people from the north, because they don't have enough facility to bring people here for the fair.
So, and really what I think is gonna come down here is when we get these costs, whatever it is to move the road department out, whatever it is to build their facilities, whatever the matches for the broadband, then we can really sit down with 2.2 and really start breaking those things out. And we're gonna be short, we know we're gonna be short. So now we gotta figure out, okay, how can we finish this project with other funds? And that's where the challenge is gonna be.
Absolutely.
And I think I have a question for Doug. Doug, that, so we just got our SRS payment of 1.8, which was a million over what it should have been tracked?
I don't know if it's a full million, Commissioner, but yes, it's close. We, what I'm waiting for right now is the distribution to the schools, then to determine what the official SRS payment to Valley County will be, and what the payments to the schools. We're waiting for that information from Idaho Association of Counties.
I sat on a webinar with the Treasury, and they told us specifically that there was a section of SRS that the counties were gonna receive that the school districts would not be entitled to, because the schools had already gotten ARPA funds. And so these were gonna be directly through the SRS health formula, but would not actually go to the schools. So, I think I need to do some follow-up and find out exactly if that payment has been released yet, what the parameters are around that payment, because that was gonna be an extra million into the road department. And I think that that is maybe your right-of-ways and that type of thing. A one-time, you know, bump in our funding there could be where we spend some of the right-of-way purchases or some of that stuff.
Yeah.
But I was told specifically by Treasury that, I think, Valley County was entitled to about a million dollars outside of our normal.
Well, that's gonna come along with our normal, which is around, what is it, 980,000 normally?
Right.
For SRS.
SRS.
Basically, we got a double.
Yeah.
But the schools were not going to be able to take a portion of that. I'm curious as to what the, you know, the schools looking at that. I will, I will follow that payment to make sure that we don't lose any additional that should not have gone to the schools. Not that I don't support schools in every way, shape, and form, but they received their section of ARPA differently, and we will receive our section of ARPA. So we may have an extra million on some of this road department's conversations. So we may actually have some additional funding that we could spend.
Yeah, so I'm looking to staying, and if I'm Joe, Joe Bill Public, and I'm looking, what do we need around? Well, we need better roads, that's, that's, that's a given. Except that maybe is not the best place to put these type of fixes. Roads is, it's a long-term, it's a big deal.
And we have a lot of carryover there.
Yeah.
So we have to plan carefully on exactly how we spend our carryover budget for the roads.
Well, Mackenzie, thank you very much for this. This kind of keeps us up to date. And we appreciate all you're doing for Valley County. I'm hoping it's working out for you as well, and life is good.
Life is good, thank you. I'll, I can plan to do a final presentation when this closes after June 1st, if that's helpful.
Yep.
So we can plan some, some meetings.
Yeah, Mackenzie, we're also, yeah, that's what I was gonna say. We need to go ahead and put it into a meeting format also, and take this to the public.
Okay.
And hold some public hearings in the evenings.
Perfect.
All right, anything else?
Good. Well done.
Hey, thanks, Mackenzie.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, have a great day.
You too.
Hey, we've got about 10 minutes until our next agenda item. The next three agendas items until almost lunch are budget workshops. The first one was P and Z, the second one is treasure, and the third is U of I. So we got about 10 minutes, if you need a break, which I do, and we'll start, let me get back.
That 11,212 or whatever, is that total number, or what does that represent?
I didn't see what you were looking at, so. 11,212, I don't know. Oh, let me see.
Oh.
Should that be the same number or not?
Let me look and see if I have that presentation.
If you add up those total members.
That's what I'm wondering.
What responses you're gonna, that's what allow you importance.
That's what I was wondering too, if that was. Well, we have a young gentleman in here, and I don't think I know you.
My name's Brandon.
Brandon, it's nice to meet you. Are you just visiting with us today, or?
Yeah, I just wanted to listen in, become more informed.
Please.
What's your, what do you do, Brendan?
I work for a private family that lives in Boise. They have a couple of homes up here that they just keep for private use. And so I do have property management for them privately, not under frost or. They just wanted somebody to hold accountable. They wanted an individual rather than, you know, a group of people going in during their work, so.
Okay.
No, I work for a private family that doesn't give any short-term rental, it's just for their private use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you with the blacks?
No, Harrison's.
So they've got 212 responses then?
212 separate, and, and Brandon is correct. If you look up at all of the responses, that's about the number of choices, if you add all together the choices.
Seven choices.
And then they added a whole bunch of just off the top of their heads ideas there that they listed down.
Curious, and I couldn't, my screen froze.
Yeah, well, I need, I need that, I need this Office 375 101. It's just hard to, for me to, I just, I'm like trying to figure out, I'll touch something, and it goes to three little columns, and then, okay, how do I get back to, you look at this thing? And the other thing is, I'm finding, is we get so much communication. For me to figure out how to get things organized, so when I get here, I'm looking at it. That's gonna be.
I have that issue myself with all the emails.
Yeah.
And then, after so long, they drop off, you, you lose them.
Yeah, yeah, 180 days or something like that, and, yeah.
I just hope they call back.
So we're doing this on the screen?
Uh, yes.
So you don't need us down there?
Um, no.
Okay.
Did I get the narrative?
I believe so, but let me verify.
P and Z.
So Doug, the numbers in blue are the requests?
Is correct.
I can't tell you how excited I am to start the budget workshops. It's our favorite time of year.
Mr. Chairman, I indicated, I don't think that her narrative was included, so I just emailed that. I don't know if Gabby was able to email that out, but I just emailed her narrative that she submitted whilst during our first contact with planning.
Thank you for everybody.
Excuse me, thank you.
Gabrielle brought them up.
Thanks, Gabrielle.
I'm ready for you.
So since we're doing it on the screen, am I leading this discussion, or is Doug or Gabby leading it?
We all will have input. I think what we're gonna do, though, is just kind of let you know, the clerk's office will let you know that we have met directly with the planning and zoning director for her requested fiscal year 2023 expenditures. She will now present requests directly to the commissioners, and the commissioners will have the opportunity to ask any general questions to Sinda regarding her requests for fiscal year 2023. We will have a spreadsheet for the commissioners to follow along with on the projector, and this is our first one for the year.
Okay, Sinda, so where do you want to start? Travel mileage, just going down?
Let's just start at the beginning of it. There's an increase that I've asked for here, based upon the increase in number of meetings and increase in mileage for P and Z commissioners.
Okay, so that's the mileage, travel mileage, it's just for P and Z reimbursement?
Yes.
Gotcha.
It's the actual mileage for each P and Z commissioner.
Right.
For 24 meetings.
All right.
So you're looking at two meetings a month, and you already, oh, you have been, okay.
I'm not ready to ask him to go free.
Okay, then we're going down to travel, other?
Um, this one, if you, if you look at the narrative, this number is based upon the attached spreadsheet. And the spreadsheet looks like this. You should each have a copy. And that includes mileage, lodging, meals for Idaho Planning Association Conference, the Western Planner Conference, a couple NBI Land Use Institutes meeting conference, the Northwestern Flood Plane Management Association, and then miscellaneous seminars and things that we don't know if they're coming up.
Are you gonna try and send Lori to that planning conference, the Northwest Association of Planners, for her certification?
No, the Northwest, that's flood plane.
No, the one that Andrew had gone to it.
Oh, the NWCDI, they're not having it this year.
Oh, they're not, okay.
They canceled it last year in this year, Northwest Community Development Institute. But I do want her to go to the Idaho Planning Conference. Western Planner this year is in, I don't know where it'll lead to this budget, but this year it's over in.
So Sinda needs a question, a quick, on these planning things, you've got certain positions, a number of positions, and you have five people. And are, are all those people, all P and Z members currently taking advantage of all this? This is something that kind of.
And you're one of the few, you and Hugh Somerton are, Rob Garrison went once to the NBI, Sunday 7th of 2009, because that's my grandson's birthday. We had that NBI training down in Boise, you went, Rob Garrison. So, once in a while, a P and Z commissioner can break away from their normal life to go to a trading.
Yeah.
And so we try to at least budget something for it?
It, it, those were really, in my personal opinion, quite valuable, quite informative. And I, with the, with the stuff that we got going on in county, I just, I feel like something we really need to press, that him, put some emphasis on if possible. And then it needs to be covered here.
I have that on my calendar too.
Which one?
Idaho Planning Conference.
They usually bring information back for the other P and Z members that couldn't go, so that they can.
It's not the same. It's not.
No, have to be there.
Right, have to sit and network.
Okay.
And talking, you know, sitting down and talking to people.
Yeah.
Okay, so you jumped that one from 3540 to 5625. Going down to supplies?
Um, regular supplies are $1,000, but we need a master file. That's one of the things, lived up, my lars in it, the Hain, the Hain, the Hain tiles.
And that's included in the supplies?
Yes. That's 4,150. And if you look at this one, I'll do that. Didn't you just get rid of a, what was the flat? I'm sorry, those were a different type. I'm sorry, those were a different type?
Okay, so you want one still? Do you have the originals, or why, why are we keeping those and not just recording them?
The milars?
Just for the ones you're working on?
Those are just the original ones, no, they're the original recorded plots. The clerk has a copy and we have a copy of the milar.
So even though they're recorded, I guess what I'm getting to is, why are we?
If you don't want us to keep them, we'll throw them away.
Why are we saving all of these things on paper? If they're of record?
They're the original milars.
So Cinda, if, let's say, for example, you need one, you could go down and get one through the computer and get one printed out, a full-size milar still printed out off, what's in Laserfish?
If the clerk lets us, we can pull them out of the permanent record. If you don't want us to keep milars, we don't have them.
How important are they to you and the function of your office to have your own set?
It's something that was in the ordinance that we do, and we've been doing it.
So, Cinda, what you're saying is, oops, that, from your standpoint, it's pretty important that you don't have to leave the office and walk across the campus every time you get up. You need something like that, is that what you're?
No, we can, we can find it online, we can find records of surveys and plaits. You know, we're always on our Laserfish and things looking. Ones with the changes on them are located in the assessor's office. If there's a change to a lot or something than they indicated on theirs. It's just our ordinance said, there are two milars, one is kept in the record, recorder's office, and one's kept in.
I think we should stick with our ordinance. I know it seems like it's a little redundant and maybe a little expensive, but just for security reasons, I think it makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
I, and I, okay.
It's just more money, but.
It's gotta be convenient for you.
Well, it's, it's not, I, she doesn't ever open those.
Yeah, she doesn't use them at all, it's a storage vehicle, and we're trying to get rid of paper.
But, I mean, we can stop keeping them, just send people to the clerk's office.
As long as, yeah, as long as it's secure, and that.
The clerk's office, I hope, is secure.
Wait a minute, how does Doug's office feel about that? Because all of a sudden, you're gonna get more, no problem?
That's our job.
Yep.
Okay.
And then if you guys need them, a big copy printed. Lori Fredericks has a big.
So then we can knock off four thousand one hundred and fifty dollars off this?
Yep.
And we'll drop that back down to a thousand dollars? Then we'll drop this back to a thousand dollars?
I'm just really trying to push for everybody to think outside the box and get rid of paper. It's just.
See how it works. Let's go on down to supplies awards, you left that at seventy-five. You bumped telephone up just a little bit, I'm assuming that's for a phone for Jody?
What was my question, is, I don't see anything in here for Jody.
Wait a minute, she's got.
Compliance tablet.
Tablet, yep.
If you look at this one.
Her security purposes, does she need a phone? I mean, she's out traveling around at places that, you know.
She has her personal phone, if, I mean, if she needs to call nine-one-one, she could use it.
Is she communicating with you when she's out in the field? Because I think that she would be one that we would want to reimburse her for her phone.
We had a choice between a phone or a tablet. And the tablet's going to enable her to download the layer that shows issued permits. And so like when she's driving through Wagon Wheel, she can look at her tablet and say, oh, yes, they have an RVC permit, or they have a short-term rental permit, or they have a CUP for this. I think it's critical that she have that.
Two, and this tablet I just got last week is the thirteen Pro, and it's about four hundred and eighty bucks. So you're right on there. I don't know, saying get this kind, but.
Well, they're gonna have to.
Jeremy will forget you one.
And we've been asking for that. But there's a certain amount of money that has to be paid for broadband or Wi-Fi or.
Well, and any computer software or stuff that goes on it, too.
So does that come out of your budget or Jeremy's budget?
Software usually comes out of Jeremy's.
Well, I budgeted for it.
Broadband?
I don't know. Remove that if it comes out of it.
How does that work?
So the cost for, if it's, if it's brand-new software, yes, that cost would go to the IT department, in my opinion, but if it's a monthly fee for connection, that would come out of Cinda's budget.
Great. And what do you think about, I mean, we reimburse a number of people for their phones. I think Jody, for, for security purposes, should have something available to her, so that she can call the office if need be.
That would be a decision for the director to determine.
We can all see how much they get.
Right, we have that all broken out.
We can add.
I would add a little bit for Jody.
But if you get a tablet, you're probably gonna be, it's probably, if you get a tablet for it, it's gonna be like the Sheriff's Department, forty-some dollars a month for connectivity and all that stuff. So I would assume that a thousand eighty's gonna be, maybe a little short.
Well, how much does it cost for a phone?
And we go up to what?
Twenty.
Fifty.
Fifty bucks is the most.
There's a twenty-five. He's just using. You wanna give him a twenty-five.
So I think we should see what it comes in at. If she's over, going over the ten, then we need to request more.
You have to determine how often.
Is she communicating with you when she's out in the field?
She hasn't gone out very often because of the winter road conditions and people haven't brought their RVs up yet. She's only gone out. Harrison Patrol deputies hit the ten. Four boys have supervision. She needs to communicate occasionally. I would think, you know, when she goes out, she probably calls me twice every time. She goes out three days a week, maybe. Would that be the ten or the twenty-five?
Why didn't you read it before we solidify your budget next time, and, you know, you and Jody talk and figure out what kind of communication you're gonna have? But put something in there for her phone.
I think we should go at least another hundred and twenty dollars. That'll be ten dollars a month, and then we can kind of see how that goes. If we went twenty-five, that would be, what would that be? Um, two, three hundred dollars? Three hundred dollars, let's go another three hundred dollars on the current request, so it'd be a thousand three hundred and eighty.
And then, so the code compliance tablet, four hundred and eighty dollars purchases one, is that what this is?
No, this is for the connection.
For the connection, okay, perfect.
Broadband or downloading.
Okay, let's go on down, the next one is gasoline.
I love that one.
Fuel vehicle?
So the vehicle is being purchased by Jeff for the motor pool?
Gasoline.
Just gasoline only?
I don't think this is enough.
No, you're gonna run out of.
More than a tank full a month, easily. The tank's gonna be probably a hundred dollars a month, that's true.
Basically double that personally.
Yeah, I think that's probably right.
So I do a tank at seventy-five dollars for a car, so that's a tank a month. Two tanks a month is twenty-four hundred. I don't think you need to really double it, but.
But can we go to twenty-four hundred on that one? And then we'll see how close we get on the line item?
I mean, I'd hate to see her be constricted because of that, because her job's really important.
Yeah, she won't be going out, you know, as much in December, January, February.
Okay, we're going down to professional services, and in your notes, and you talked about twenty-one, you were over four thousand over, and this year you're over eight thousand?
Over.
But this is stuff we get reimbursed for, correct?
Right, it's typically a wash, except they started charging a little more, because we've asked them to review the agenda also. And they have to have conversations with us, and they charge us for that. And they pick up the phone, it's half an hour. So.
I think twenty thousand's pretty reasonable.
Twenty-nine dollars a month, that's like a thousand dollars of miscellaneous.
Okay, with twenty thousand, work for everybody else?
Works for Cinda.
Okay, we're going down then for dues and memberships.
The four hundred seems to be covering.
Yep.
We'll have to increase that once Lori gets certified and.
We'll leave that one at twelve hundred, going down to printing. Star News Publications, have they, has Tom raised those rates? Do you know, Cinda?
Yeah, but we have a lot more applications.
So, what did you do last year? You did three thousand last year.
I think his rates did go up.
What's that?
I think his rates did just go up.
Think so, too, but you went up another five hundred from last year, that'll buy you, what, two more ads?
Is that enough?
I don't know.
I think we should, I think we should bump that to four thousand.
So her justification behind that is, she hasn't spent the three thousand that she was allocated last year yet. So she's really under budget right now.
Where did you read that?
In her response. We've already spent sixteen fifty-two in the current year and are only fifty percent through twenty twenty. So.
Well, let's leave it at thirty-five hundred. Sixteen thirty-two, yeah, let's just leave it at thirty-five hundred. Okay, let's go on down to education. And you jumped that from five hundred to three thousand?
Yeah, I was on the spreadsheet, that includes all that, which in here in this first line.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll leave that at three contracts, other, a thousand. How much have you spent this year, do you know?
Nothing. I wanna spend that, that's that little heat she gave me in case I haven't opportunity to spend it on scenic byways or water trails or some other thing that I get involved in that I didn't know I was going to be involved in.
I have a friend that's on P and Z down below, and they're having to pay translator costs. People come in that don't speak English, I thought, how interesting, things you don't think about. Sterling codifiers, you jump that up, you expect more orders, stuff this year?
Next year.
I mean, next year, yeah.
I do. We figure out what we're gonna do.
And some of that's gonna be, I mean, the waterway stuff, and we've gotta change all those ordinances eventually, and just the projects we're working on, I can see some ordinance changes coming up. You think that's enough? I mean, if Planning and Zoning were to make some decisions on what they're working on, how much have you spent now? I mean, you're at thirty-five hundred in twenty twenty-one.
Right, but we had quite a few changes.
Seems to me like you gotta go up a little on that, based on what you're talking about, we got other stuff coming up.
Hopefully, we're not gonna have a bunch of iterations.
Well, what, waterways to update, update next year, what else?
All P and Z is looking at all of our Planning and Zoning ordinances, and what we're gonna be doing, they're looking at all the subdivision ordinances, and, I mean, there's a lot of work that's in process right now that could potentially end up needing change.
Yeah.
If I was gonna put five hundred bucks somewhere, I'd put it there and put that to four thousand, but.
Okay, so we'll raise that one to four thousand under Sterling codifiers. Next one is contract contributions, this is a thousand, keep that the same, and then refunds, you've left at five hundred.
So that is the one that you were talking about from up top, transcriptions? So you're, this is the thousand-dollar request for the scenic byways? So what is transcriptions, the one above it? Transcriptions, to me, is rewrites of something.
Oh, the, if anything goes to district or, or, then we have to have.
Okay. So that would be within your budget or within a?
Well, it has been in the past.
Cinda, on the refund part, do you think this is gonna cover it? Do you expect a lot of people coming to refund because of the cost of construction and all of that?
If they do, we've received it on the other end, we only.
This would be for plaits or what?
We only refund what they've given us. So if they submit, you know, five hundred dollars for a vacation application and decide they don't want to do it.
If you've done any work on it, then you certainly keep. Okay, you think you're, you're okay with the five hundred?
Yeah, because it's just a wash, I mean.
Okay.
I'm back to transcriptions. Doug, do you think that should be in the attorney's office? I mean, do we have?
I really think it probably should come out of Cinda's budget.
Okay, perfect.
This will give us a little bit of slack in case something else goes over somewhere else. Okay, then anything else, I think we got it.
Cinda, are we looking at any increases in your fees for this next year?
Increases in fees, we just increased them. And actually, we just lowered them.
So we lowered the thousand to five hundred on the appeal, but are we now meeting all of our responsibilities? Since, since Jody is on board now and doing the work to do those short-term rentals, I've gotten a lot of input from people around the state that short-term rental fees need to be higher in order to account for all of the work that's being done on the front end. So what other counties are doing, I just talked Fremont County, and they're doing two hundred ninety-five dollars for any short-term rental. It's up to twelve people, and then anything, no, up to twenty people, anything over twenty, it's five hundred dollars a year. So our rental fees to do that work is very low.
Do we, do we need to bring that back as a topic? Just kind of like, for instance, look at her budget, this probably meets what we're doing now, but it sounds like that is a pretty major thing to think about.
I think we need to look at short-term rental fees this year.
Well, you have to look at how much time it actually takes to process one, because it isn't a lot of time.
I would like to know how the other counties are charging as much as they're charging.
On them.
If they.
It can't be a deterrent to a short-term rental. It has to be based upon the amount of effort put into the application. Our is only administrative and it's only up to twelve people. Anything over twelve people, the conditional use permit, we need a different fee for that.
And what does our conditional use permit be to do that?
For a residential type would be, I think, three hundred. Fifty or three hundred.
And what is our short-term application fee?
Our whole point in doing that was to try to keep them on the books.
Now that we have Jody here and we're paying for someone to help do that, I think we need to look at, what is it really costing?
Yeah.
In order to do that work.
Didn't we change that kind of combination things during the downturn, didn't we, Cinda? Back years ago?
Right. Short-term rental, yes.
Yeah.
You're still here.
Maybe time to review that.
You know, that would cover a couple hours of her time, it'd take anywhere near that time to process. Very simple application.
Because it's so new, I think we should wait and see what, what you come up with as the actual time, and and maybe in a year from now, we can look at these fees, but we don't know right now how long it's gonna take or what's, other issues are gonna pop up.
And I'm not even talking about her doing an application. Yes, that is an easy application. However, for everyone that's not filing that application, she's gonna be spending time online looking for those and seeking out those that are not filing for their, their applications. So that's all time that is also needed for short-term rental notification and, so, I mean, there's a lot of them out there that currently haven't applied for their permit. There's gonna be a lot of time and effort spent finding those people, getting those people, bringing them into compliance.
And you think that should be go to the applicant then that has complied?
I think as a department, that is a division, you're gonna have to figure out how to cover your fees.
We can do that, we can.
So, it brings me to a question I had, Cinda, is this is a standard, I've. So, it brings me to a question I had, Sinda, is it, this is a standard high-down job, that Jody?
Full-time.
Is it full now? Just for compliance?
Well, no, she also, that's, that's one of the other things. She's helping do noticing, looking at signs.
So, I mean, I personally, I'm just gonna throw this out, but there's a lot of need for compliance. And I don't know, I just, you know, you look at this and you go, well, it's time. We've got an awful lot of CUPs, I got a message the other day on my phone, says, Mr. Allen, Mr. Commissioner, can you name one single CUP that's not, I underlined this scenic highway thing, that's enhanced our scenic byway on Highway fifty-five, it's really hard to do that in all honesty. I think we've done a great job of handing out CUPs over the years. I don't think we have a great job of making, keeping our feet to the fire, and that's why I asked if this is.
Right, and that's what she's going to be doing, and she started January eighteen.
Right.
The snow just melted.
Right, I understand.
And she's going through those CUPs.
There's a lot of them.
And just for. Aren't that many on Highway fifty-five. Aren't that many.
Well, there's quite a few.
I've noticed up north that all of a sudden, everybody's starting to make little dirt burns.
Yeah.
I don't know what that's all about.
Well, what's going on with that?
Landscaping. Dirt burns? Dirt burns. They put dirt and then they put vegetation on it. So is that asking us, is that coming from these CUPs that were, okay, great.
A lot of them haven't actually been completed, there's a number of them, it's, they're just dirt piles. You know, and have been for a long time.
Well, there's the one.
Yeah.
And that's what Jody will be chasing, is those types of things. Short-term rentals aren't gonna take a long time, that's just processing an application, they're not going into their houses and counting the number of people. How many short-term rentals permits have we actually issued? Well, over a hundred. And there's something like eight hundred in the county potentially? I don't, I would think that most of those are probably in McCall and McCall and that area. Even if you look online, most of those are in the McCall. Are not, I don't think that there are eight hundred in the area. I don't know where I got that data, but. The guy that keeps wanting to sell, sell his services, saying that there's eight hundred out there, and I can find them all for you.
Probably a lot of it we don't have CUPs for.
They do this. Um, and just for clarity on all of us, because I didn't understand this, but Jody is only for planning and zoning enforcement. I thought when we approved that position, it was valley countywide, and so her job description, as provided to me in the last week, was specifically for planning and zoning issues and not building department, I, I thought it was valley countywide. So we need to, you know, her, her work is under Sinda's division. And if Annette needs something, we have to discuss that separately.
Well, I think the two big issues that I remember talking about is, is to go back and look at these old CUPs and make sure they did everything they said they were gonna do, and then to start figuring out the Airbnbs and how many we got and start getting those registers, that was the big function. And, uh, as far as the fees, as far as the refunds, you know, it's kind of a reactionary management. You gotta really see how much it's gonna cost, how much in refunds are gonna be requested before you can really set a hard budget on that. And if you come back to us mid-year and say, man, I'm out of money in, in whatever that line item is, and then we have those discussions and try and figure out a way to cover them, it happens all the time, but.
On my feedback after doing this for a while is, is I think each one of the divisions need to look at the costs for their department. And if you are a fee income department, you need to figure out, are we covering our costs? And that's, that's a larger conversation than the counties had in the past, we've just arbitrarily put fees out there. And I think it's important to the taxpayers that if these are user fees, you know, you want to use this service, you need to pay for that service so that we're not impacting property taxes higher than we need to for people not using that service. Well, it's funny, it's wondering, we do so many other things besides just fee-driven, um, applications that my entire budget is not funded in fees. Understand that.
Well, and the issue you really honestly run into is like, in the health district, we do septic tank permit fees. It's the number of permits per year divided by the cost of the labor to send the inspectors out. So if you have a year that nobody builds anything, you don't have any cost. So you have to kind of have a little bit of gray area in there to be able to float those on those years when you don't have any development going on. Um, find something else for those people to do, but, um, you can't go up and down and up and down every year because every year is different, you know?
You have to have a leveling.
You gotta level that out and kind of get some common sense into it, but, um, there's a lot of things that people don't pay for that they expect the county to do, and we have to provide.
A lot of my time is spent just answering people's questions.
Yeah. It's the general questions.
General questions, what can I do? I mean, housing, private, all these conversations, I mean, aren't funded. So we, we do try to figure out how long it takes to process an application, you know, what the fee is for the Star News, how long it takes to, you know, post the sign and make sure that those are covered. I'm asking.
Okay, I would, I just, I wouldn't want, I would encourage you not to be, I mean, real, too conservative on these things because, you know, really, as you pointed out, you spend a lot of time with them, so somebody pays for them, and they should, and we should, um.
And I think the short-term rental conversation is, is a huge one, and we need to make sure that we are looking for everyone to have their current permit and that we are charging appropriately for what it costs us to have to go after them.
I agree to Sherry too, and Sinda, like, some of these companies that manage Airbnbs, I'm assuming she's contacting them and getting a list of those. What are you doing, and is there anybody in Tamarack that she can go to one person there to get?
They're really being responsive, Tamarack's being, you know, totally upfront, and I think a couple of the other management companies are really doing well. There's a few of them that we still need to.
Hey, we're out of time, thank you very much.
It's the independent ones that are gonna take a look at that.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see where these eight hundred are. There's a lot of them out there, if you start looking at the VRBO sites.
Yeah.
And we've, we've looked at those, I mean, you just, I mean, you go look and.
Yeah. Seems like it's almost impossible, I'd think it's tough to keep up with, but. We need a, a registration for our Airbnbs and storage sheds, you know?
Yeah. Storage sheds, converted into Airbnbs.
Converted into Airbnbs.
We're gonna have a storage shed discussion later.
Okay, we're gonna move on down our agenda, this being the time, we're gonna have another budget, budget workshop for our treasurer. Joanna, come on up. And just looking at your budget, you've pretty much maintained everything all the way through.
This is her first one, so we automatically start with decline.
Yeah. It's my, uh, first budget presentation for something that I'm, I've done myself, uh, ever, so.
Well, we shouldn't have to worry much about this one.
As you know, we're not talking about the A budget today, just the B budget. We'll start right off with travel mileage, you kept that the same, you kept registration the same, you've kept supplies office the same, awards the same. And then we have a change in fuel, gasoline, oh no, not cell phone, let me get my paper here. Yeah, you went from twelve hundred to six, so you saved us some money there. Okay?
Does she not, she doesn't have used her phone?
And then we'll go on down to, uh.
Oh, hold on one second, please.
Sure.
Um, so on the travel mileage and the registration fees, so because you have a new chief deputy, I'm surprised that we're not getting more requests. So, because you're new, you're gonna go to those meetings and then she will follow on maybe next year, is that your plan?
Yeah, well, um, okay, so, since I'm new, I'm choosing to attend all of the statewide treasure-related conferences and functions, but I'm going to forego the national conferences this year, so I have a reduction in, I probably will do that, but I also would ask the case of the conference and then I'll talk about it for a second.
Okay, so you guys will both be attending most of the statewide conferences, just not leaving the state, okay, perfect. I just want to make sure that you were thinking about taking her too and training.
Yes, so we'll both be attending this, tomorrow, and then the annual treasures conference is in August, so that's in this current schedule year. It's not effective by this budget for next year.
Okay.
Um, and then next year, the annual treasures conference is actually in fall. So we won't have mileage or hotel for that, and I plan on retaining all of the staff at my office to use one day.
Nice.
So we'll save a little bit on travel that year, but I do plan on, I think, the national conference that year, so then.
Perfect.
Joanna, what kind of training do you guys get as far as investment and that kind of stuff? Is that all part of those local meetings?
So, I have not seen any investment training on the local meetings or conferences. We have a financial advisor who works with us through B D S thing, and his services are through all of the banking transactions that we house. So there's no fee reflected in my budget that actually comes out of the interest that we post each month. Um, I think that that's just a service that the advisor likes by having to help with them. Um, you'll see under the professional services, I, the request this year is for thirty-one hundred dollars, and a portion of that is, I would like to look into some investment analysis for us. I don't know what the cost on that is going to be, we're actually, we had a meeting scheduled for last week, but it got rescheduled to this week, so I don't have to get a better term or. The other thing, if we're talking about the professional services line, um, on the worksheet that Gabby provided, you can see there used to be, uh, education was included in one line and professional services was included in one line. And in twenty-one, education went to zero, but that detail went up in the professional services line. I removed that back out of professional services and created a line for education. In that increase, we have some investment analysis that we might like to look into. I also would like to prepare some more visual aids that would be useful for us to provide to our website and potentially as a one, it's a tax bill, and I have a few, uh, design. And then we worked back and forth on the printing costs, on how much that is gonna cost after sending out with the tax bills. And I never got a clear answer from B D S on how much that would cost, but based on a letter that the assessors sent out a couple of years ago, it was about six hundred dollars.
I was just gonna say, talk to June, because we did that, it's probably gonna be a little more than that now with more people, more mailouts, but it was very successful. And that was my next question is words are printing, but you're gonna go through B D S on that, and that'll.
Yeah, and the B D S fees for sending out the tax bills don't actually come out of mine, but they come out of the general one. So I had offered to have that specific payment, that portion of the income come out of this budget, and that's the major reason we have to.
And then on the tax deed expenses, you get reimbursed for a lot of that.
Yes.
Almost all of it.
So the way it was explained to me is any expense that I list there will also be a part of the margin, so it'll be a wash.
Can't think of anything else. Got travel mileage. Um, the question more for Doug, but Doug, underneath like contingency account, don't we usually put like a hundred dollars in there just to keep that line item active?
Not always know if the department doesn't feel they need to have it, yeah.
I didn't know we could do that. Okay? So if there's no more questions, I think that.
You don't need any gasoline fuel, you guys don't travel at all, or?
No, I think that what they were using that for in the past was getting the mail, staff, who's in the first line of course, to. But also, I was thinking after I discussed it with the press office, if any mileage reimbursement for two million deposits up to.
It was in one.
Oh, yeah.
But I go to McCall, I'm not for my own personal reasons, and I don't feel that doing the reimbursement is necessary.
Well, that's nice for you to do that, but if you ever get to that point where you have to go and you're not going personally, then keep track of that.
Yeah.
I don't think that we expect you to work for free.
I think one is my children are at school at McCall, I will be going straight to McCall.
Well, I'm glad you're getting some training on investment, because now with the, the interest rates coming up, the CDs, things like that are gonna start looking. We're promising, the big question is, you know, six-month, three-month cash flowing it out, and that's the training that, that is, would be important if you could find that to kind of watch.
Yeah, the investor or the manager, or fund manager for B D S has been really helpful. We had an hour and a half long call on Thursday of last week discussing the application for the increases. And, um, over the last four months, since I am unfamiliar with attaching the activity of the county, I have told them that I prefer to reinvest on the short-term as we watch the rates rise so that we can potentially find some of those higher payout, higher interest rate investments for us. So we're kind of watching and waiting, as money matures, we're throwing it into three to six-month investments.
Bitcoin.
And don't buy any bitcoin, all right?
We are not, we are now statutorily limited on what.
That's what I thought before.
The legislature passed it, so you're, you're more clearly defining what, uh, county's first request.
Okay, if there's no more questions for Joanna, I think we're done. Easy peasy.
How did you like the, the process?
I really liked it, I, um, I spent a lot of time analyzing the last three years' work and expenses to see what, you know, I don't know how much supplies our office will be getting, looking through the details, all of this. It was, it was a good way to learn, uh, what my office is.
Well, it's about half over, so you better hurry up.
Yes.
Summertime or?
Summer is, yeah.
It would be nice if we did a day that was seven.
It's coming. Thank you.
Well, I know, it's a hot button issue, but I'm listening to what's going on with this, and I'm going, wow. It's a subjected, they're losing that position at the end of the election, if they, you know what I mean? Not likely, but, you know, and you get into that kind of a job, that kind of importance, and, and then vulnerable at every election season, no matter how good you get at it or how invaluable you become.
As we said, there should be some positions that are based upon skills and not on politics.
Really, it, it, and that's definitely in my personal opinion, I look, wow, you could do all this stuff and then next January, somebody else will be sitting there with no back air whatsoever.
Years ago, we had a serious discussion about putting an election to where all elected officials except for commissioners and the sheriff are appointed.
Yeah, this is, I, boy, I tell you what, that may be a subject that in the future needs to be revisited because I think we're pretty much like all the other counties, but some of those jobs are just not, you.
And you know, it's really great, because we have a great clerk that's trained all of us.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
But as he gets beat, now we're in trouble.
But that's why they all have chief deputies too. Those chief deputies are supposed to be fully trained, Gabby is amazing in the clerk's office and could.
It's vulnerable, those are really vulnerable, it puts counties in a vulnerable position.
It's always been a problem, all the history is lost when someone.
Yeah.
Leaves or loses an election, you lose that history, and, and then a lot of mistakes are made over and over and over because nobody's there to say, yeah, we tried this and did this, and it worked, but, um, it's, I think, maybe that's good and bad, you know? You look at Congress and those guys, they have to be there forever to get any kind of clout.
But they have, as far as. But they have, as far as this particular type positions, very seldom do they jump into those.
Right.
They, it, they do hire people for that sort of thing, you know, cities do as well, you know.
Now, and, you know, that's why, to me, it's always been important that if someone resigns, elected official, that, that, that chief deputy gets promoted up into that position, because they know what's going on.
Yeah, that'd be just like, because I'm just these two people right here, you know, you get, a history has to have a continuity, we have to have something that's. At least I would think so.
Okay, we've got about eighteen minutes until our next agenda item, which is a budget workshop for extensions, so we'll take a break and see everybody back here at eleven thirty.